So I'll call the meeting to order. For the selection meeting Tuesday, April 7th, 6:30 PM pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law. Chapter 30A, Section 18 in the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southboro Board of Select will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of public indoor parties with the right indoor requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southboro's website at www.southborotown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southborotown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we were, that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southboro's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So the meeting is called to order. All selectmen are present except for Mr. Kalenda.
Mr. Shay.
First.
If you, if you, Mr. Kalenda is an attendee. If you want to pull him over.
Oh, all right. Sorry. Hang on. Moto panelist. There we go. All selectmen are now present. Uh.
Thank you, Brian.
No problem. Uh, first item on our agenda is scheduled appointment Senator Eldridge and Representative Dykema with a legislative update. And I am going to also move them to panelists and they will hopefully join us smoothly. Uh, I did the wrong one. How do I, let's see.
Senator Eldridge?
All right, can you hear me?
You can hear your fine.
Yes.
Oh, great.
All right, very good. Sorry, I little glitch there on my part. I moved the wrong Jamie over. So Senator Eldridge, Carolyn, I'm not sure if you can hear us, but it looks like you're on mute. If, uh, if you could unmute just to make sure that you are there and we can hear you.
Is that working?
That works much better. Thank you.
I'm not sure why I'm not on video, but if I can figure it out, I will change that.
Okay. I'm sure it's something I did, but it was not intentional, I assure you. Uh, so we typically have these.
Is it the stop video option?
There we go. There we go.
I'm sorry, Jamie, we're saying?
Oh, no, I was just telling Carolyn to change the video option, but I was mistaken.
All right. So we certainly have these legislative updates under much different conditions and but we certainly appreciate the both of you taking time out of very busy schedules to join us here tonight. I know your time, I'm sure, is in high, high demand with everything that's going on. Um, but with that, Senator, Senator Eldridge, I'll turn it over to you first. Do you want to give us a quick update from your end?
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you for inviting us, at least for my 14 communities. This is my first virtual Board of Select meeting, so thanks very much and always great to present with my house colleague, Representative Dykema. Um, so thank you so much for sitting at the agenda and I know there were some questions also, but in terms of my presentation, um, you know, uh, I'm sure you're aware, but the, the legislature did pass two municipal reform bills. One of them was around town elections as well as certain special elections. And then the most recent one was allowing for town meetings to be delayed, providing more flexibility to towns and cities around budgeting as well as obviously allowing for more virtual meetings like this beyond what the governor had already did. So those were the two municipal reform bills. And in terms of other pending legislation, certainly there's discussion around housing protection protections for tenants and homeowners. There's a discussion around a social safety net, you know, whether it's food assistance, uh, rental assistance for supporting our most vulnerable populations. So I'm certainly on the Senate side. We've been very active with that and I've been checking in with all of the, the food pantries throughout the district and just trying to get a sense of the needs of constituents. Certainly some of them are saying they're seeing more people apply because people have been laid off or their hours have been reduced. And appreciate the work of the Baker-Palito administration with all their guidelines. So certainly trying to get out the information that they're communicating. And, um, on the budget front, I did have my meeting last week with the Senate Ways and Means Chairman Michael Roderick's. This is the regular FY21 state budget meeting. Obviously, uh, we're already seeing a massive decline of revenue and so he couldn't really tell me what might happen with everything from, you know, local aid to education aid to even level funding, things that, you know, we fought for last, last year for the FY20 budget. There was supposed to be a virtual economic summit today by House and Ways, House and Senate Ways and Means Chairs and Secretary Heffron in for, for the Baker-Palito administration. Unfortunately, the, I guess, the, the video broadcasting didn't work, so they did not have the summit, but I was going to bring together economic experts, economists about, you know, how much revenue could be lost, how that affects the state budget and therefore towns and cities. Massachusetts is fortunate to have the largest rainy day fund in the country at over, I think, $3.4 billion, I think. So obviously that can, you know, fill the, the gaps of reduced revenue and I'm certainly going to be advocating, you know, very strongly for, um, you know, at the very least level funding from last year. I'd love to see an increase, but I honestly don't know if that's going to be possible. But at the very least, level funding and sort of quote unquote, hold our communities harmless in terms of the assistance that the Boards of Selectmen always advocate for. So more updates on that. And I guess the final thing I would say in the budget front is I, I certainly have been an advocate for some sort of emergency sub-budget, um, to, to strengthen the social safety net around, you know, food insecurity, housing insecurity, supporting our community hospitals, public health boards, any other, you know, suggestions, ideas from constituents or elected officials. Um, because I do think we need to do that now. The Federal Cares Act, you know, is going to provide billions of dollars in Massachusetts, but unfortunately I don't think it's going to be enough. And so I do think the state needs to step up at this time as well. And again, would welcome any ideas and suggestions to how to best serve Southboro residents and metro resident, Metro West residents in general. So thanks so much for having me and looking forward to answer your questions later.
Thanks, Senator. I guess I'll, I'll jump in now. There's a lot, lot of ground to cover and I first just want to acknowledge the town of Southboro for continuing to operate in these really challenging times. As we know, the situation with coronavirus hit pretty suddenly and towns were really asked to turn around and to dine and make a lot of changes in the way that they operate day to day while still delivering services to their constituency. So I just want to recommend and commend you all. Senator Eldridge had mentioned, uh, this is also my first Board of Selectment meeting virtually and, you know, Southboro is really just at the, leading the way in terms of how we can operate in this new normal. I also just want to recognize the residents of the community who I know have been supporting each other through this. Lot of hardship out there and, you know, coming together around this is going to be really important. And I know the residents of Southboro, that community notion is very important to them. So I'll highlight just a few things. I'm sure you all have questions and I'll try to move through the information pretty quickly and hopefully efficiently here. First of all, I thought I would just give an update as to what I've been hearing from residents of the district. Obviously you're hearing things. I would love to hear what you're hearing so that we can work together to make sure we get the supports in place that we need. But some common themes that I've been hearing is obviously unemployment insurance. There are a lot of folks out there who are either newly unemployed or significant loss of hours that is impacting their income right now. So trying to work with local people to get them connected to unemployment insurance and then try to guide them as we look to this expanded unemployment program for self-insure that's going to be made available through the federal program. Soon, folks, for people that may be watching from home, that new federal program for self-employed is not available yet. They have to download some information and set up some program parameters, working with the federal government. So people are asked to hold off applying for that program right now, but we'll be, you know, be making information available as soon as that's ready for folks to apply. Small business loans, obviously for small business employers, those have been very popular. Were rolled out on Friday and my understanding is that the need for those and the applications has been overwhelming. Um, and they're talking now about an additional wave of federal support as well to kind of backfill some of the need that may not be filled by the first federal program. Lack of personal professional equipment. It's been interesting to see how many healthcare providers we have in the district and in Southboro and been hearing a lot about what you've all been seeing in the news, no doubt about the lack of face masks and protective equipment. And so my office is getting pretty regular contacts from folks who are asking whether it be for themselves or for their loved ones who may work in hospital setting or in fact a public safety setting. You know, we all at the state level, the governor's office, obviously, but even us in the legislature are, are pulling whatever connections we can make to get some of that equipment newly available. Lastly is an increase in mental health concerns and issues that are increasingly bubbling up where obviously isolation is really hard for people and, you know, that personal connection is really important to us and people are struggling, especially I've been hearing from a lot of parents with young children who are trying to not only keep everyone safe, but also homeschool their children, which is a tremendous effort. So all of those things, you know, having an open line of communication as we move through this and see new needs come up is going to be really important. And one of the things that one of my Youth and Family Services connections had mentioned was the desire to be included in town conversations, whether it be with the board, with public safety officials, just to have an understanding of what public health needs or mental health needs there are. And then how can we connect folks in the community to services so that they get the support they need? So I'll touch on, on legislation. I know Senator Eldridge mentioned some things. I won't repeat what he said. I want to bring up the public safety legislation that's been filed. One of the concerns that's been raised is about some of these first responders, healthcare professionals who are having to be quarantined as a result of COVID-19 and how is that going to be categorized when it comes to pay? So there is a bill that would institute emergency hazard health duty pay, which essentially says that if you are quarantined or impacted by COVID-19, the time that you are forced to take off work is actually considered fully paid time. So that bill is in the legislature right now. I did send out some information to the town on that and the committee where it sits is now accepting testimony. If anyone in the town wants to weigh in on the provisions of that bill or anything that the committee should be aware of. There's also for the schools in particular, question keeps being raised about the MCAS exams. There have been a lot of guidance issued to help schools with their transition to virtual learning. One of the things obviously that, that needs to be addressed both federally and at the state level is the MCAS requirement, which is actually statutory. So there's going to have to be a statutory change to amend that and that bill is in process. I believe it's on the Senate side now, Senator, if I'm, if I'm correct.
Yep.
Normally at this budget hearing at this time of year, we're talking a lot about state budget information and as the Senator had mentioned, there's not a whole lot to offer right now in this regard, just because things have changed so dramatically. The hearing that was supposed to be held today with the Ways and Means Chairs that got canceled due to technical difficulties was really sort of rolling back the clock on the budget process. And by that, I mean initially, the first step of the budget process is setting a consensus revenue figure where the governor's office and both houses and legislature agree on a foundational budget number that we build the rest of our budget off of. That was the initial consensus revenue was done back in December, early January before the governor filed his, um, house or his budget. And so we're having to go back now and reset all of those numbers. So that's what this hearing was going to be, was, you know, the, the step to, to go ahead and reset that number so that we could then start the next wave of the budget process. We, we don't have that information yet. It's all very much a work in process. And I guess what I would say is let's just be sure to keep in touch as this moves forward. Hopefully we'll be able to hold harmless fiscal year 20, which is the current fiscal year, which ends at the end of June. There hasn't been any talk as there was back for those of us that were around during the recession of nine C cuts, which are essentially mid-year cuts to local budgets. I haven't heard anything about that. I have asked. We do, as the Senator said, have a fairly healthy stabilization fund right now, which is good news. So hopefully we'll be able to hold the line through the rest of this fiscal year. But as far as next fiscal year, it's not even clear when we're going to formally start that budget process, never mind how we're even going to be able to vote as a legislature, given that we can't, you know, be physically present in the, in the House. So all of that is still being worked out and we're, we'll be sending you information as that, as that comes out. So of course, please, you know, continue to make us aware of your concerns and your needs as well as we have these conversations. Um, other, there, there has been some conversation, you know, clearly the budget and COVID-related legislation has been dominating what we talk about, but I do want to just mention that there are some other pieces of legislation and there is a desire to move these pieces of these fairly large pieces of legislation forward, even if it means extending our legislative session, which traditionally ends on July 31st, but we're talking about now potentially moving it out even further to try and get some of these legislative concerns addressed. One of them, and I want to put on your radar, is the transportation bond bill that the House took up a number of months ago. And there are a few things in there that I think will be relevant to the town that I wanted to highlight, one of which is a $500,000 authorization in there for the town of Southboro for pedestrian and bicycle mobility improvement and safety projects. So it's really just a placeholder for anything that the town would want to use that money for with respect to either sidewalks or trails or anything like that, that would help the walkability of the community. I, I do want to asterisk that amount of money because I know in the past, we've talked about bond authorizations and what they mean and how they're different from budget earmarks. So budget earmarks are immediately available and you get a check from the state. Bond authorizations are essentially, you make the shortlist, but then we have to go to the governor with a specific project and continue to advocate. So it's not guaranteed money by any means, but it's the first step in a process if the town wanted to pursue a specific project. The same legislation would also require that MassDOT put together a formal mitigation plan and proposal for the Alston Biaduct Construction Project. And I, I don't remember whether we've talked about this before, but as part of the reconstruction of the Alston Biaduct on the Mass Turnpike, there are expected to be eight to 10 years of closures of lanes on the Mass Turnpike as well as disruption to the commuter rail schedule. So that 10 years of construction will have a very dramatic impact on anyone who lives in Southboro and commutes into Boston to work. So we are, we have been lobbying heavily with the administration to put together, uh, you know, a plan to mitigate that, provide funding to institute, whether it be shuttles or any other kind of workarounds for that. And we were thrilled to get in this bond bill, a requirement that they put that together for us, which was a great win. Um, I realize I'm taking a whole lot longer, intending to be brief and I'm really not being brief at all. I guess I will just close by saying that I've also had a lot of questions about elections and in particular, the primary election in September as well as the general election in November and what that means and how that's going to roll out. So I guess I, I talked to the Secretary of State's office earlier today and what they were basically able to tell me that the November date is, is fixed, that is not expected to move. But what we are doing is hoping to increase the avenues for people to be able to vote, whether that's in, by mail voting, extended, you know, early voting through the mail, relaxing some of the requirements that you need to be able to vote through the mail, that kind of thing, really just to give everyone alternative options. Since we don't know what November honestly, or September are going to look like right now, we're just trying to plan to be as flexible and have as many opportunities as we can there. So I guess I will end on that note. Vanessa did provide a few questions, um, that have, that we can certainly provide responses by mail. Otherwise we can cover those at the end, maybe after we do other questions.
Sure. Thank you very much, both of you. Very, very thorough updates. And before I turn it over to the board members for any questions or comments, I just want to, I think I sent this along in a note to you, Mr. Dykema, but you know, this whole pandemic has hit at what couldn't be a worse time for every municipality in the town with respect to scheduling town meetings, with respect to local elections. I mean, this is really the time of year where we're taking all the actions that we need to do to put us in position to undertake FY21 seamlessly on July 1st. First, and that has just been completely, completely thrown up in the air by everything that's been going on, which has resulted in the need for a lot of actions by the legislature to help communities. And, you know, I just, I want to commend everybody in the, at the House and in the Senate and the governor's office. I think it's been a very, very cooperative effort. I think everybody's understood the urgency of it, the need, and it's been, it's been helpful to us and certainly, you know, more that we're going to need to do and a long way to go still, but you know, so far I'm just very pleased with the cooperative effort that all seem to be putting forth. So thank you for that. And with that, any other board members with questions or comments?
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Haley, go ahead.
And Senator, Representative, again, thank you very much for, for making yourselves available. This is, you didn't go on too long. This was incredibly helpful. I guess I have from a short-term perspective and it kind of fits into what you said, how are the folks in Southboro doing? I mean, my sense is that we've been lucky, the weather's been good. And so that has a, I think that definitely has a positive effect on people's mental health. I'm not sure if I've seen more bicycles, um, you know, than, than I have in the last couple of days. I mean, people are getting outside. Other than a little bit of a battle we're having here about one of our conservancy lands, you know, the schools, the town itself has been incredibly cooperative of making our public spaces available and I make an awful lot of use of them. And my personal observation is that the folks in Southboro are doing a terrific job with the social distancing guidelines. Please do not, at the state level, close Hoppington State Park. That's an incredibly valuable resource for me and an awful lot of other people to, for mental health and otherwise.
Me too, Marty.
I'm sorry, Carolyn?
Me, me too.
Okay. I'll wave if I see you. On the short term, we've got, we've had conversations both at the board level and at the town administrator level about short-term funding needs. And we have, there's, there's town funding that's avail, that's available. Obviously it's, it's, it's limited. There's, there are nonprofits that have reached out and over time they've made money available and are continuing to make money available and, and we're trying to do a better job to let folks in the town know that, that those sort of things are available. Is, is, is it your sense that there is likely funding coming from the state that would be able to be directed to our Youth and Family Services, which from a conversation I had with Mark and Vanessa this morning, um, are almost doing more volume of work since they've moved online than when they were dealing with people walking into the offices? And if there were that sort of short-term help available, again, for, for rent, for groceries, I mean, Southboro's an affluent community, but it's also a mixed community. And if there's been any sort of discussion about that, sorry for the very long lead-in to it, but the, the, the subject itself is a pretty important one here.
Well, so thank you, Marty. So I would just say, um, you know, at least in my view, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not, not sure if there would be state money for that, but certainly that's partly why I'm advocating for a sort of emergency supplemental budget so they could provide money to social services agencies like what Southboro does or, you know, the Southboro Food Pantry. So I would, I would like to see that happen because I am concerned that the federal stimulus won't reach down to the local level, but I'm not sure if that'll happen. I know there's been a little discussion about a sub-budget and, you know, Rep. M. Dyckem mentioned that today it was supposed to be this virtual economic summit to get an idea of our revenue and therefore influence, you know, maybe the possibility of a sub-budget. So I would say certainly for a board, if you think that would be helpful to the town of Southboro, you know, please communicate that to us because that helps us make our argument at the state level.
Okay. And I'll leave, I had a very long lead-in and a long question. The one final thing I'll say is I, I share your concern that the, the federal cares funding for small businesses, um, it's not going to reach down to some of the really small businesses and we have a lot of those in Southboro. So, so I, I, my position would be that, that there certainly is going to be room for state funding to supplement the, the cares funding that come in from the federal level. And with that, I'll pass off to anyone else who has any questions.
So Brian, I had a few.
Yep, go ahead, Dan.
So piggybacking on what Marty just said about the number of small businesses in Southboro, they also obviously bring in revenue to the town. They, they also employ residents. What does the state have planned not only to incentivize or to help our small businesses get back on their feet, uh, whether through tax cuts or whatever it might be? What is this, what do either, I guess in particular, have planned to help our small businesses, uh, get back open when able and be able to prosper with all of the economic damage that's been done to them for being closed so long? And then similarly, what do you, either of you have planned for the residents of Southboro in terms of tax cuts or whatever else it might be from, on the state level to ensure that our residents can be able to start spending again, hopefully again at, at a number of our small businesses?
Sure, I can, I can start on that one. So I, I agree with you, Dan, you know, small businesses, I think it's pretty widely recognized that, um, you know, across the board, to the extent that we're able to keep our small businesses up and running or at least, um, you know, current, um, to be able to get through this so that they can start reemploying people and, and open back up quickly when we come out the other side of this is incredibly important for a lot of reasons. As far as state acts on that, you know, clearly it's on the radar and we've been waiting for this federal money to come through. So the, the primary vehicle right now is federal and using the federal stimulus money and making sure that it gets to the places that it needs to get. And I know there are some challenges with that. For example, I had a call the other day from a small business owner who had gone to their local bank because these programs are run through the local bank. So they would go to their lender to just get a normal SBA loan through this new program. And the program was opened up at his local bank where he had a relationship at 4:30 in the afternoon on a Thursday. Within an hour and a half, they had 400 request or 400 applications for these loans.
Yep.
When they usually do about 100 of these a year. And so they closed it down and so this individual is no longer able to apply because that's the bank he has a relationship with. So I think we're going to be seeing more and more of this. And thankfully, the federal congressional delegation is already talking about a second wave of, of stimulus specifically for small businesses so that we can extend and expand this program to the extent that we can facilitate and support those efforts by doing things at the state level, something you absolutely need to look at. I think at this point, we're still having those conversations and if you have ideas about ways that small businesses could be supported, please, please send those up. And likewise for the, for the tax cuts for, you know, working families and individuals, there has been this new expanded program to self-employed, which was a big gap there. So that hopefully will be filled. A lot of people are. A lot of people are applying for unemployment, which is a critical need. And there's been additional funding from the federal government there as well to try and, you know, keep some of those people able to pay their bills until we can get through this. So there's no, I guess there's no specific state initiatives at this point, Dan, but certainly looking at everything. And I don't want to conflict and create new programs beyond what the federal government is already doing. But how can we efficiently support their efforts through new state level programs?
Thank you, Carolyn.
And I I would just add, Dan, in addition to what Representative Dyckman said, and thank you for your, your question focused on small businesses is that, yeah, I, I, I do think there needs to be a way for the state to step up and support small businesses. One bill that I I did file in response to mostly restaurants is what's called Business Infruption Insurance, and that would require insurance companies to pay the costs for small business owners that have that insurance to pay their employees, pay rent, other costs from the insurance companies that they've been paying into. And then the state would reimburse the insurance companies for that. So it's sort of a long term proposal. On the tax con front, I'm not sure how tax cuts would help small businesses, but I do think we need to provide, you know, direct grants and not just loans to small businesses. And so my, my thought would be taxed, you know, wealthy institutions, wealthy people raise billions of dollars and then provide that money as direct grants to small businesses that are really hurting. And I'm certainly hearing from a lot of small businesses saying that it's not even just about them coming back in a few months, but that they're going to close their doors forever because they don't have the capital to come back. And a loan won't really help. It's really about a direct grant to make themselves and their employees get through this pandemic. So that's one thing I'm focused on. And I guess the last thing is just with with respect to small businesses, let's not forget our nonprofits and, you know, how we can provide financial support to them, given the critical work they do, not to mention all the people they employ. So that's sort of what I've been focused on. And I think the legislature in general is very focused on supporting small businesses.
One thing I So I just wanted to add, Dan, that there was some leniency given to hotel and meals tax, the room and meals tax, knowing that these, you know, some smaller restaurants and things would be owing these taxes. They did extend the deadline and are offering some latitude in how those can be paid and when those can be paid, again, recognizing this cash flow issue.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I just would encourage you to keep, you know, the concept of, you know, this, to me, this is not an opportunity to tax some people more. It's hopefully an opportunity to tax a lot of people less to hopefully get more money back into the system that people can spend. They spend at our small businesses, they make money, we get tax revenue from that. It's, you know, it's a cycle. So I'd encourage you to just consider those options as we, you know, look to reopen our businesses as soon as we can.
And Carolyn and Jamie, before you move on from this subject, the, you know, a small business in New York is not a small business in South Row. A small business in Boston is not a small business in South Row. I mean, a hundred and fifty employee outfit qualifies for these small business funding. Four hundred and fifty employee outfits qualify. And I took a look today at the the applications and the documentation. It can be daunting for, you know, a small restaurant that employs twelve or fifteen people. So I really think there's going to be a, a that there's going to be some slippage through cracks here for the particularly small business that exists in communities like South Row. And and that's the the focus, not the hundred and fifty, the four hundred and fifty, the five hundred employed small businesses, I think will be fine. They employ accountants, they employ attorneys. It's going to be the really small businesses, I think, that the state is going to have to worry about.
And Marty, I've had conversations with a couple of small businesses in town here, or indeed very struggling with how to get that process working, either through their banks or otherwise. I mean, if you're used to that kind of stuff, you can dig through the regulations. But if this is not something that you do every day, it can be a real daunting experience. And I agree, they're going to be left out in the cold. So need to deal with that. I do have one additional question, if I may.
Yep, go ahead, Sam.
The, as, as I read about this event, it looks like it's going to last for some extended period of time in one form or another. And I wonder about the supply of personal protective equipment. Mark, I don't know how we're set now in terms of our public safety staff, including the Board of Health. But if this is going to go on for some period of time, I think there's going to be continued strain to make sure we've got adequate supplies of that. And I hear and read about the state having access to a variety of this kind of equipment, whether it be masks, gloves, gowns, et cetera, et cetera. Are there things that we need to be doing to get ourselves positioned to guarantee a steady supply of that? So our our public safety staff is adequately protected as they deal with people who are likely to become infected over a number of months as we look forward.
Well, Sam, sadly, I don't, I don't think the state has extra those supplies. I mean, you know, we obviously need the federal government to increase their production. And there are some, you know, factories and buildings in Massachusetts that are, you know, you know, creating these supplies now, the N ninety five masks, but, you know, clearly there's a, a big, a big gap there. And, you know, I hope that can change, but need the federal government, you know, to collaborate with the state government and get more companies to be producing these products. And it's, it's a real crisis. So I I share your concern and our first responders need to get those supplies as well.
But the state doesn't have any plans in place to find supplies and funnel those to the town. So the towns aren't left scrambling independently out there to buy what they need.
Yeah, well, so.
I mean, this, the state is doing everything it can to get supplies for a range of needs, including help, you know, frontline healthcare providers, public safety officials. We had a conversation with the the secretary this morning about the need for congregate care facilities such as, you know, group homes for the disabled, nursing homes, all of these individuals who are working on the front lines don't have enough protective equipment. One of the creative things that I think the state is doing is there's a, an organization called Mass MEP that works with manufacturing companies and has for quite some time. And and they work with both tech schools as well. And they are actively reaching out to some of our local manufacturing companies to see if they can retrofit their businesses to manufacture some of these needed supplies that are maybe manufacturing other things that are similar. So there's a pretty robust program for any business that may be interested in participating in this program to work with Mass MEP will provide the skill, you know, the skills and the training to to get up and running with ever, you know, with the public safety and protective equipment. The other thing is that there is a fairly robust effort to reach out to anyone who might have this equipment, whether it be universities or, like I said, both tech schools, even though the marijuana industry uses a lot of this protective equipment in their growing facilities. So how can we pull this all together and get it to the frontline folks who really need it? And that's, I would say that's probably job one right now for everyone across the state, including, you know, right up to the governor's office.
Thank you.
Hi, Jamie and Carolyn, how are you? Thank you for coming tonight. Nice to see you again. I'm going to touch on one of the concerns that I think Dan and Marty both also touched on is, is I'm worried about our food pantries as, you know, people get furloughed, as people get laid off, there's going to be a greater need for the food pantry. And most of our food pantry don't, are donations that come through the churches and whatnot in town. So I was wondering or hoping there's going to be some form of legislation to be able to supplement some of these food pantries that are helping more people now than they've ever helped before. You know, the, the schools are doing their part with the lunches and whatnot. But it, it's great for that. But when you also have parents home that typically aren't home as well, that's another meal that a family may have to worry about. So any thoughts you could have, or maybe even keep that in, in the back of your mind as you're putting bills together, you know, to be able to take care of the food pantries? There, there are first, first defense here for, for families, you know, that are in need. So just please keep that in mind as well.
Thanks, Lisa. A lot of our pantries get supplies from the Greater Boston Food Bank. And I know that there have been a lot of efforts to help support the food bank so that they can push a lot of these supplies out to the individual communities to meet that local need that you're talking about.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate your reason as well, Lisa. And I, I would just say I, I have been reaching out to the food pantries throughout the district and they are seeing a greater need. As you said, and to Rep. Sam Dyckman's point, the Greater Boston Food Bank, I think a lot of people are increasing their donations. But there was also a line item that supports these food pantries, the MEFAP Mass Emergency Food Assistance Program. And I really think if we do a supplemental budget, we should have an additional funding for that to provide more groceries and food because, you know, donations are great, but I think at this time, need to increase state spending as well.
No, absolutely. And, you know, families that sometimes may have always, always donated as well to the food pantry, you know, are finding themselves as well now not being able to buy those extra items when they have to think about their families. And things are in short supply in the stores. We all know that. I mean, this will be known as the great toilet paper year of twenty twenty, you know, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you both. Anything else from anybody? Again, Senator Aldridge and Representative Dyckman, thank you both very much for taking your time out of your busy days to join us this evening. And you can compare our abilities, technical abilities now to the other communities as you get invited in the next coming weeks.
Or to the legislature.
Yeah, that's right. Very well done tonight. Thank you, guys.
I didn't say, you folks talked about the legislation you passed. It's very welcome. It really is going to help us. So well done on the legislative front.
Great. Let's keep talking. I'm sure there will be more needs that come up. And to the extent that you can make us aware of them so that we can, you know, advocate, that would be great.
Great. Thank you both.
Thank you so much for inviting us. Have a good day for the rest of the meeting.
Take care.
All right. Next on our agenda is interview for ZBA alternate position. Jamie Mith for the term to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. I, so Ms. Mith, let me just see if confirmed she's still in the attendees and I will move her into our panelist group. And there.
Here I am.
Excellent. Thank you very much for joining.
That's going to be a hard act to follow, but here I am.
Thank you for joining us tonight, too. Just a little bit of background for the board members. We've had this opening on the ZBA for quite some time now. And I know Chairman Nicholson has been, has reached out to me in the past and to others to to try and get this position filled. I know it's a little, you know, enormous to have, you know, an interview and meet new candidates and in person at a, at a regular board meeting. And I don't know when we're going to be able to do that again. Sooner rather than later, we're going to be looking at committee reappointments as a whole. So I just thought it would be a good idea to speak with Ms. Mith tonight. She was, you know, nice enough to have put in and apply for the position. And again, this way we'll, you know, have the ZBA vacancies filled. And when we do all the committee reappointments, we'll have those full ZBA moving forward. So with that, I appreciate everybody's indulgence and conducting you know, a meeting with, with a candidate in this forum. Jamie, I guess I'll turn it over to you to start if you just want to give us a little bit of background on yourself and why you're interested in ZBA and this open position.
Sure, no problem. So I'm originally from California. I moved South Row in two thousand six. And I have a background in law. I have a degree from Suffolk University Law School. And in California, I practiced construction defect and and now work for a company that is involved with insurance compliance, all types of insurance. And I've always wanted to be involved with the town, but unlike you guys, I didn't have it in me to run for election. So I happened to see, I think it was on the My South Row that that position was open. And I had actually been before the ZBA for variance for our own home a few years ago. And I just thought this might be a good way to get involved and volunteer my time.
Very good, very good. Are there board members with questions?
Yes.
Mr. Kalenda, go ahead.
Hey, hi, Jamie.
Hi.
Hi, and thank you so much for volunteering. It's, you know, it, it, it can be incredibly rewarding. I've done this job in particular for almost nine years. It can also be incredibly challenging. And it can take up a lot of time. So I guess one of the, you know, again, so thank you for, for offering to donate your time to your town. You know, how would you handle conflict? So you're going to, you're going to, when you sit on some of these, in, in some of these meetings, you're going to have some incredibly passionate people who will come to the microphone and maybe even then afterwards write things about you on My South Row or, or somewhere else, trying to, you know, influence you to, to see their, you know, to, to vote in the way that they want to vote. You will also have other times, you know, when, you know, you're going to have a level of support for you. I mean, but, you know, it, it, when you start making those tough decisions, you know, the room can get hot sometimes. How do you handle that conflict? Do you, do you, do you listen intently to everyone's opinion? Make your own or do you go to the loudest voice in the room?
I definitely listen to everyone's opinion and then make my own. And having practiced law, I have some experience seeing in the courtroom, listening to other cases that are not mine and hearing both sides of the story, which can get very heated. And since you don't know the clients or the story, you have to listen to all the evidence and decide which side you think makes the most sense. So I think I have a lot of experience with that. I think I'm very even keeled, so I'm not too concerned about that. Obviously, having gone through law school, I've been through a lot of ethics training and have that background. So while I wouldn't look forward to being hated by the majority of the town, I do think I could look at things in a very even way and listen to all the voices, whether they be loud or not.
Great answer, Jamie. And usually it's just a very small portion of residents that's really mad. But, you know, again, overall, I think the town is very appreciative as, as you'll see, I think this board is of those who want to volunteer for it. And you know what? We all make the best decisions we can with the information that we have in front of us.
Exactly.
Ground as a lawyer, I think, you know, shows that you'll, you would have the, you know, those analytical abilities to listen to both sides and make the, the best judgment that, you know, that you think is best for the applicant, for the town. And, and I look forward to supporting you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brascio, questions?
I do. Thank you. Hi, Jamie. Welcome. I want to, again, thank you for stepping forward. My questions were similar to select my Kalenda's. I, I think one of the, the biggest things that we've all found as we've all served over time is just listening to people. People want to be heard and they want people to be fair. I'm very impressed with your credentials and you stepping forward. You have my support a hundred percent and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stivers?
I have a couple, yes. Jamie, again, thank you for stepping forward. As someone who spent seven years on the zoning board, I think I'm in a pretty good position judge the requirements of the job. I think you've got an excellent background for it. And it's great to see someone with your background willing to volunteer. I, I guess I will ask my perennial question about potential conflict of interest. You may know from following the blog, there are people who are suspicious of all motives from on, in many areas. And I think that it's important to be very conscious of the potential for appearance of conflict. Are there any business relationships or personal relationships that you have that could create a problem in terms of appearance of conflict? And if so, how would you deal with that?
I can't think of any offhand, but I'm about as upfront as they come. So I think if I felt that there was a conflict, I would just say I can't make a decision on this case. I would recuse myself, yeah. I, I wouldn't want to be in that position to look like I made a decision that favored someone that I knew or would favor a business that I know.
Which doesn't help you or the town or the board. So that's, that's the wise choice, certainly. So that was my big question. Thank you again for volunteering and you certainly have my support.
Yeah.
Mr. Healy.
Yeah, very quick. Hi, Jamie, I have a soft spot for anybody with a law degree. So welcome.
Thank you.
And I, I'm guessing from your answer to Mr. Stivers' question that the, the insurance law and regulation work that you do doesn't intersect with real estate related matters?
No. So what I do, I, if, do you know of websites like LexisNexis and Westlaw? They're kind of
Oh, sure.
Yeah. So I work for a company that has a product very similar to that, that specializes in the insurance, insurance industry, property, casualty, life, health, all of it. And we are basically a database for the insurers to remain in compliance with all the state regulations, statutes, anything coming out of state agency like a Department of Insurance. So we're basically like a Lexis So we're basically like a LexisNexis or a Westlaw, and we cover all 50 jurisdictions, all 50 states and Puerto Rico and Virgin Islands and, and all that. So it's not, it's nothing that would conflict in, in terms of what you're saying.
Yeah. And, and your answer to Mr. Stivers was spot on, which is if it does, then you'll refuse.
Yeah, no, I work for a huge corporation that's based out of the Netherlands. I think there's like 35,000 employees worldwide. And we are one teeny tiny little division of that, so.
And did you say you did some construction related stuff?
I did some. When I practiced law in California, I did construction defect law, which.
What about whereabouts in California?
Well, I grew up in LA, but I was practicing in the San Francisco area.
Oh, cool. I spent about 10 years there.
Oh, yeah? Whereabouts?
In San Francisco.
Oh, in the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were living just over the Bay Bridge, but I was working in Walnut Creek.
Oh, neat. Okay. Well, again, appreciate your, your volunteering. I think you'll enjoy it and welcome.
Thank you.
Right. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
We appoint Ms. Meath to the alternate position term to expire, is it June 30th here? Is that the current one?
That's correct. And then she'll just get, you know, rolled into the next committee reappointments that will be coming up in the next few weeks.
I'll second that, Brian.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Shay, I.
Kalenda, I.
Rashia, I.
Heely, I.
Passed unanimously. Jamie, thank you very much again for stepping up to volunteer. For your patience in joining us this evening. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you guys.
Worn in by the town clerk.
Yeah, so I don't know how that's gonna happen. But that's, you can.
Maybe virtually.
Sure, Joe will reach out to you. If he doesn't, feel free to reach out to him as well and we'll make sure that happens.
All right. And thanks for giving me excuse to wash my hair today and. Thanks, guys. All right, bye.
Good night.
Uh, all right. So the next item on our agenda is discussion of postponed date for annual town meeting. With that said, one of the, two of the key participants in that discussion are Mr. Hegarty and Mr. Cipriano, I'm sorry, Mr. Semino and also Mr. Cipriano. Mr. Cipriano is, I see, in our group of attendees. I do not see Paul and I do not see Jim as of yet. So I'm going to suggest that we give, well, I'm gonna like, I guess just move Mr. Cipriano into our group. Good evening, Aldo. Can you hear us okay? Looks like you're on mute right now, though.
I can hear you.
Now we can see you. A tie even on these times. Wow, I'm impressed. So, uh, I'm gonna hold off a bit and give Jim and Paul Semino a chance to call in. They're not on the Zoom right now. So I'm just gonna go through a couple of administrative items on the agenda and hopefully they will join shortly.
Anything?
Uh, so I will go next to consent agenda to approve open session minutes for March 31st, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Shay, I.
Kalenda.
Stivers, I.
Was that everybody here?
We need Lisa.
You were on mute.
Rashia, I.
Heely, I.
All right, they passed unanimously. Next item, as we continue to wait. Update on impact of COVID-19. Continued discussion of meetings of town boards and committees during state of emergency. Ms. Brascio, you had requested that we put this item on the agenda. And I know that Tom has sent an email to the board as well earlier today, giving his perspective on other boards and committees meeting. So Lisa, I guess I'll turn it over to you first.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for putting on the agenda, Brian. So one of the reasons I had asked for Brian to do this is there seems to be some form of confusion on the board's directive that it either be time sensitive or COVID related. I know lots of boards and committees want to meet. I know I had gotten a few phone calls after an agenda was posted earlier this week. So I'm just looking for some form of, of maybe clarity from the board because there seems to be some level of confusion. Also, one of my concerns was, and I'm, I'm glad Tom had sent his note, is I am all for getting all the boards and committees back, meeting again. But we can't overburden Tom in trying to do that. So it, it's trying to find the balance. I personally am not really, until Tom tells me that he's got people trained and that the burden won't fall on him for all these meetings, I'm still hesitant to open that door to anything short of time sensitive or COVID. I mean, even this board is only dealing with COVID and time sensitive items right now. So just thoughts from everybody. But again, my main concern is, is keeping Tom from being overloaded because he's got so much going on for all of us right now.
So I agree with the, with wanting to be cognizant of the time drain on Tom in doing this. And from the email that he had sent out earlier, it's good to see that he is reaching out to others to get them, to get other people exposed to this, trained on this, so it isn't just Tom that does it. I guess from my perspective, you know, I think we're gonna be in this situation for quite a while. And I don't think it's reasonable to expect that, that the committees won't have needs to meet. And I think if, and if we can do it again with the restrictions that, and not restrictions, but I guess the guidelines that Tom had outlined, that we utilize the Zoom as the resource for doing it and coordinating the timing of meetings so that, you know, the two licenses that we have don't come in conflict with each other and there aren't more than two meetings that need to be scheduled. I think it's, personally, I think that, you know, I think we're getting comfortable enough with this format. I think we're, people are gonna be using this format for a long time moving forward. And I think it may be time to, to allow folks to, to start to meet again and start to return some normalcy in, in people's lives and, and the boards and committees' lives as well. I don't know what other people think about that. So Sam, you're on mute. I'll go to you, though.
A question that may be directed at Aldo. As, as boards start to meet again through Zoom, I think about the permitting boards and I wonder if there is a, an issue relative to a permitting board that takes a vote to issue a permit remotely like this, and that permit is later contested for some reason. Is there any legal basis for suggesting that that kind of vote is not as, as, as firm or solid as something that happens in person?
It's a good point. I don't think so. As long as the guidelines are followed in terms of how you conduct a virtual meeting and as long as there is accurate record keeping, which is, that's not gonna change, that it won't be virtual. That's gonna be a physical record. That's what's appealed. That's what's challenged. So as long as everyone follows the normal procedure in conjunction with the changed rules here and keeps good records relative to the decisions, I don't think this is going to be an issue.
I could see someone, for example, arguing that, you know, I, I don't have a computer and I wanted to participate in that process. I object to whatever is being discussed. And so I didn't have a fair opportunity that someone who is technologically enabled did. And again, I have no idea how the courts might look at something like that to potentially invalidate a permit.
They would not, they would frown on that. They would want full participation by whatever device or means can be had. So that's gonna have to be addressed as we go along. But to preempt, for, because of electronic deficiencies, a person's involvement would, would not be looked at favorably.
Yeah. So I'm suggesting if we can think of ways to actually provide for that kind of access as we go forward. And, and if there's anything else that you can think of that could somehow be argued that invalidates or, or creates an opportunity for appeal of decisions, it'd be great if we were relatively bulletproof on terms of permitting, particularly going forward.
I don't know. Is a couple of, Aldo, if I can just jump in for a second?
Sure.
And I'm sure you get a lot of the same emails I do from the, from the Supreme Judicial Court and otherwise. I, I guess my view is that the, that town boards and committees operating in good faith are gonna be given an incredible amount of latitude by the courts. The emails that, and, and updates that we're getting from the courts are new ways for your signature to be used in documents is being recognized by the courts. You can see the legislation. So I think good faith is going to be a very important consideration. And with that in mind, Sam, to address your point, what we might do particularly for permitting boards is to include on the notice that's on the website that if, that if someone wishes to participate in the meeting and does not have access to a computer, that they, and Mark, maybe you can jump in here, what the, what the vehicle would be to advise the, the townhouse of that so that we might have the ability to make additional, you know, accommodation.
Or might have capacity at the library, for example, for people, if we can go out at some point.
Something like that.
That, that, that would cure, that, that could cure a procedural issue. I, that's absolutely the, the right way to go. Because it's a whole new world out there right now and we've got to make sure that there's sufficient transparency and public involvement, particularly in the public hearing process.
So what are we being asked to do tonight?
Any other?
Brian, I can jump in.
Are we being asked to actually do something tonight?
Why I, I asked Brian to put this on the agenda, Dan, was because I was getting a lot of questions from people's, I serve, you know, we all serve on different boards and committees. And for instance, you know, Shopsey wanted to meet and I said, no, you know, the board is preferring that you wait and does its COVID-19 or whatever, because that was the direction we had given. So my question here is for the board tonight, are we going to open this back up so all boards and committees can meet? And if we are, how can we be cognizant of Tom's time? And do we want to put a timeframe on when we can open it back up? Because I think business as usual has to start at some point and there are boards and committees that need to meet. So how can we come up with a solution to making that happen?
Hey, Lisa, can, Dan, you were, you were talking. Go ahead.
No, no, just, and I didn't know if that's something, good discussion here. Maybe that's also something that Mark, Vanessa, Tom can wrap their, you know, heads around too. You know, in their, in their, in their daily meetings to see if that's something, you know, how can we make this happen? I agree with you, Lisa. At some point, and hopefully some point soon, we want to start, you know, having some normalcy and be, having other boards and committees be able to meet. They have important business that has to be done as well. Not everything to me has to be COVID related. I mean, there's other things that have to be done to help move our town forward. And, and I'd like to see it happen sooner than later. So maybe that was just my thought, Marty. And maybe Vanessa, Mark and Tom can start to put their minds together on how to help, how to do that.
I, and, and I'll, I'll just weigh in. The, 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 the original concern was one of volume. And there was a concern that because everything was gonna be done through virtual meetings, that there, there was the potential for a real overload, particularly for Tom and his time and, 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 you know, capabilities. Obviously, he's shown that he has, he has mastered this. And so much so that he's, he's, he's now in the process of training other folks to master it. So I, I think loosening up the, the, the original vote we took, which was that we would leave it to the judgment of the boards and committees, but that they limited to things that were time sensitive and COVID related, that we loosen that up and allow boards and committees to meet. The one additional sort of viso that I would include, though, is the other reason for not having all virtual meetings or having everything be discussed in a virtual setting is what we were talking about before. It really does affect the ability of the public to participate. So if there are items that, that are particularly important for public participation and there's not a particular time element, I'm fine leaving that to the discretion of the boards and committees. But I think it would be important for us to let them know that that's an important consideration, that, that this is, the, the, the virtual meetings are not a panacea. They don't replace the ability to, of people to show up at the townhouse and participate. And so with that advice to boards and committees, I'd be willing to, to give them the green light to, to go ahead and, and, and operate unless and until we hear from Tom or, or from Mark that we've overloaded the system.
So just, I'm, I'm sorry, Sam. So if I could just jump in just to answer some of the questions that have been going on. So I have had conversations with Tom and that is my concern and, and Lisa brought that up. And I thought that was, you know, a good point. Tom's all we've got. And, and he has been doing a great job in trying to transition from these live settings to these virtual settings. And he has been shepherding a lot of these meetings until he's sure that boards and committees and the chairs can administer these meetings on their own so that we make sure that what we're sending to the town's YouTube site looks good. I do understand from Tom, we have had several other people, including Ms. Hale and Ms. Danza. And I believe Ms. Hockler from Planning, who are willing to also help to administer these meetings, you know, you know, with Tom. There's a training that's gonna happen later this week. So we will have now, Tom will have minions to be able to, to help with setting up these meetings. I think the biggest issue is everybody wants to meet on certain days at the same time. And there's no way that Tom can run two different meetings. So, you know, given that we're talking about virtual meeting rooms and, you know, we're really not bound by a six or a 6:30 type of thing. And, and the public does have a better opportunity at least to watch and participate when it's virtual and you don't have to be in a given space. That's the flexibility piece. But to, to Marty's point, I think that we are seeing, you know, that light at the end of the tunnel in terms of Tom having more hands to be able to run these meetings. So he doesn't have to be there for every meeting. So I, I, I do think that would, you know, starting next week, you know, it, it makes it a little bit easier to, you know, to allow, you know, all of these boards and committees maybe to start to get back to a sense of normalcy.
And, and Brian, I, a couple of comments. One, to Marty's point, I think it's, again, great to get back to business as usual. I think that puts even more pressure on the boards and committees who are meeting to actually get a meeting packet out sufficiently in advance with whatever documents are going to be discussed. And, and some boards do that very well. Other boards have not been doing that so consistently. So I think that, for me at least, part of the requirement, if you're gonna use the virtual approach, you gotta get the, the meeting materials out enough in advance so people can see it. I think there are two critical resources here. One is the number of Zoom sessions that we can run, which I understand is two now. So we could have two meetings going simultaneously. We had a conversation, do we need more? Not clear to me we need more of that, but the other critical resource is Tom's or technical resource to do it. And it sounds like we're making progress in terms of broadening the capacity there. But for me, one of the missing elements is I think you gotta have a central scheduling function in here somewhere. So I would love to maybe mark, to organize how that works, to make sure that the, the requests for meetings are something that can be handled, given the two Zoom sessions and the however many people are available to do it at particular times. So somebody, I think, has got to coordinate that, sort out committee A has an urgent need, so they have a little higher priority than committee B. And make sure that we don't have conflicts in terms of resources that aren't available, et cetera. So somehow a scheduling mechanism in there, I think, is a critical element to get access and then not overload the staff.
So Sam, there is a scheduling element to it when people, if people want to go in to schedule a meeting and you're looking for a particular room, say you want the room that has the ability for public comment on a particular day or time, you'll see whether it's available or not when you go to schedule it. We have not got in, we haven't had the issue yet of priority first, you know, various, you know, two groups wanting the same space at the same time.
Does, does someone see, for example, that the, the Zoom capability is available, but we don't have anybody to coordinate or to facilitate it? That's the other dimension that I think we have to keep an eye on. You don't want to overload Tom, basically.
No, absolutely. And I think, I'm hoping the beginning next week, assuming that, you know, the, the, the staff is, is adequately. No, absolutely. And I think, um, I'm hoping the beginning next week, um, assuming that, um, you know, the, the, the staff is, is adequately trained, you know, to be able to assist him, we should not have that overloading.
Good, okay.
And to your point though, Sam, I certainly don't want me or I certainly don't want to be, have to be the referee to make a decision among three boards that want to meet on any given night, which two have the priority and, and which one doesn't. So I'm, I don't think we ought to be put in that position either. So it's, you know, again, if boards, committees schedule a meeting and someone else comes along and that time isn't free, then no different than somebody else having, you know, booked a room, physical room ahead of them, you know, in our past life. So I think they just need to, uh, work it out. And again, I think people are going to be reasonable and I think we're going to get through all this, so.
Brian, just, Brian, this is a point, I'm sorry, I saw Mrs. Hale had her hand up for an awfully long time and now she's taking it down. I don't know if she has a comment.
Maybe we get Lisa's comment while.
Just a quick thing, I, I, I wonder if we should, because public participation is so important and we do have the capability to do it. Maybe it's worth it for us to mandate that if you're going to have a meeting, to be able to use the meetings like we're doing now, if, if the room is open, to be able to have public participation, that we would recommend that they do that. Um, I worry that if, if this room's open and somebody has a meeting and there's something on an agenda and somebody says, I didn't have an opportunity to participate and this other room was open.
Yep, yep. No, I'm, and I'm sensitive to that and agree wholeheartedly with the point that Marty made earlier about just doing everything that we can to, to promote public participation in these meetings and allow people to participate, so.
Thank you.
So, so Brian and, and Lisa, since our previous vote was to, to, um, leave it to the discretion of the boards and committees, but, um, to highly recommend that they limit it to, um, urgent matters and COVID matters. I guess I would move to, um, soften that to, um, uh, those meetings be the, a, 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 an important consideration for them, but that they also are open to have given technical capabilities and availability to have, um, um, business as usual, normal meetings as well.
Yep, I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Shay, I?
And, and I will, I will just point out for the record that, that, that Dan, you're, you're giving us a nice, uh, evening on South Row. If you sit out near the deck.
So I got, I got kicked out of two rooms in the house, so I figured I'll come outside.
You got a fire pit going, Dan?
No fire pit yet, but the, uh, the, the hawks or whatever they are up there are, uh, they come back every night. So they're, 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 uh, they're roosting up in the high trees.
Very good, all right. All right, so we now have Mr. Hagerty and Mr. Smino with us. I'm going to promote both of them to panelists. Jim and Paul, you're both on mute right now. Can you hear us?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Can hear you all very well, yes. Jim, still can't hear you, you're still on mute.
There we go.
There we go. Jim, are you there? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Can hear you now, Jim, very good.
Great.
Thank you. All right, thank you both for, uh, for joining, and this brings us to, the scheduled appointment, the third scheduled appointment that we had for this evening, which is discussion of the postponed date for annual town meeting. Town meeting is currently scheduled for next Thursday, April 16th. Legislation has been in place to allow the, for a meeting that has already, or town meeting that has, for, for which a warrant has already been posted. For the moderator to change that or postpone that meeting date in lieu of a pu- uh, public safety situation. And that has now been extended through the recent legislation to include this pandemic that we are, uh, living through as well. So as we all know that we've already postponed the date for the annual town meeting, it was originally supposed to be Saturday, March 28th. It has been moved now to May 16th. Uh, and I guess with that, I'm gonna.
April 16th.
I'm sorry, April 16th, April 16th is the current revised date, apologies. So with that, uh, Paul, I'm going to turn it over to you as the person who is the one authorized to, to postpone meetings and to, uh, pick a date for a new meeting. I'm going to turn it over to you to get your thoughts on how we should proceed.
Okay, well, thank you. You know, I, my understanding of a couple of points, a couple of thoughts. First of all, my understanding of the current, uh, statewide, uh, declaration is that it, it runs through May 4. Is it, has that been, has that been updated or changed, or am I right about that?
So May, my understanding is May 4th.
May 4th. So certainly we're not, we're not, um, nothing's going to happen between now and then. I understand also, uh, that the new legislation, um, for lack of a better phrase, uh, contemplates a, a maximum of 30-day increments. So in other words, we go out from the current date of April 16, no more than 30 days. And if we need to revisit, we revisit, but in the meantime, that's the intention. You know, given the, uh, given May 4 being the absolute first date and all the things that have to happen between now and town meeting. Uh, my, my inclination, uh, although I, I don't intend to, to make a hard decision tonight, but my inclination, unless someone has, uh, some reason to, uh, disagree, in which case I'd love to hear it, is to, is to target the week of May 11, which is a Monday, through May 16, which is a Saturday. You know, pending the, uh, canvas of folks in terms of their individual schedules, et cetera. But that would be my intention. I don't have a preference for a weeknight or that Saturday, the 16th. I don't want to rule anything out unnecessarily. And so, um, those are my thoughts as we, you know, as the calendar stands today and as the state of emergency stands today. Um, I'm, I'm obliged, I believe, to consult with, uh, in addition to this board, public safety and public health authorities as well on this, uh, item. And I have not done that yet. But I, I, I certainly, um, intend to do so and certainly well in advance of May 4. And so announcing a new date, um, sometime, uh, in that timeframe that I indicated is something that I intend can happen, you know, later this week.
Okay.
Those are my thoughts.
Okay. And I, just from my perspective, given the, uh, you know, the constraints that we have where we're really limited to a 30-day by 30-day timeframe, I completely agree with that. I don't think it's reasonable to schedule it any sooner than that week that you had targeted. This is just my opinion and, you know, we don't need to resolve it tonight. Again, because we're limited to a 30-day by 30-day, um, time limit. I think that we're going to be looking in all real, now realistically at a timeframe beyond that as well. And I just think that we're also ultimately going to be looking at a much different format from the town meetings that we've grown accustomed to. As I, I just think it's going to be a long time before people are going to be in enclosed buildings again. And I think we need to start thinking, be prepared to think out of the box for some sort of an outside town meeting. And, and quite honestly, you know, everybody acted in good faith to get the warrant out that we needed to get out. Nobody at the time expected that we would be in the situation that we're in now. Had I known this, I would have advocated for a much, much different warrant, a much slimmed down, you know, bare bones. Just target the key essential articles to get us into FY21. And everything else, let's target for a fall town meeting when we can guarantee that we can have a town meeting in the trotty or auditorium, in the surroundings that we're all accustomed to, to allow us, you know, the opportunity to have a full and healthy debate on all of the warrant articles. I just think to, to think that we're going to undertake that, the warrant that we have in the manner that we've traditionally done it is, is, is not realistic in my mind right now. So, oh, but again, we're limited right now to a 30-day extension and I support that 30-day extension.
Yeah, thank you. I, I would just add, um, to your last point about the size and complexity of the warrant. Statute requires that we deal with each article. Dealing with an article can be a very quick vote to indefinitely postpone. And I, I, uh, I contemplate packaging up the non-essential articles, if that's the right phrase. You know, at a, at, at what would become an abbreviated town meeting. How abbreviated would be up to the attendees, would be up to the town meeting members. But, um, you know, we have the, we have the consent agenda, uh, a tool that we first used very successfully last year to dispose of articles that we vote on in summary fashion. We can also as a group, group, uh, uh, you know, take another tranche of articles that we just don't want to act on in the immediate timeframe and indefinitely postpone them to the fall, thereby in, in, in a couple of quick fell swoops, leaving only the essential articles that you were just speaking of, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. So Brian, I'll add.
I do have that in mind.
I mean, I think Paul's recommendations make sense. Um, and I, and I guess my question was really for Paul, Jim and, and Aldo, have you heard anything? Any other options of what towns might be able to do in terms of voting? For instance, having a, a virtual town meeting, um, the ability of people to vote by mail. I mean, I know you don't have the great debates, but, you know, uh, these are, these are different times. And at some point, we have to be able to pass those budgetary items. You know, have you heard anything from the state or are there any other options that, um, other towns or, or the state is coming up with? So that we can make sure that, you know, come June 30th, we're able to, to continue business July 1st.
Dan, I have not, and municipal lawyers for the last month have conducted telephonic conferences, uh, where we discuss pending litigation, this necessary litigation that our cities and towns might request and to just have a general open discussion about how we're going to implicate, not implicate, but implement the, um, provisions of the, the new laws that are going into effect. So I have, that, uh, telephonic conference happens every Wednesday. I'll raise the issue, but there's nothing on, on the horizon that would do anything to change the traditional town meeting.
Aldo, I actually think that's the most important thing, what you said at the end, the traditional town meeting. I don't think just by, by the, I was surprised, um, at the legislation that was passed and, and signed by the governor. But reading between the lines of it, they, I, I think they're worried about, about, um, town meetings withering away. And, um, you know, that this being a first step. And I really think that, that the reason there's only 30-day increments and the reason there aren't the sort of common sense suggestions that, that, that you've made is because there's a real concern about town, town meeting being a, a casualty of this, uh, of this pandemic.
I think you're right. And, and the other point is, how to, how to really know who's participating remotely or virtually in the town meeting, who may or may not be a voter. And you lose control of the, the tightness of the legislative process.
Any other comments?
I just have one question, if I may, Brian.
Go ahead, Lisa.
So I, I think you touched on it and Paul touched on it as well about potentially doing, um, indefinitely postponing some articles until the fall. Can we just, can you just walk me through that process a little bit? Just so I have a better understanding of how that would take place if that took place.
Well, um, you know, at, at, at times it doesn't seem like it, but, but, um, the, the care and feeding of the warrant really does lie with town meeting members. Um, as I mentioned, statute requires that we take up each article. How we dispose of them or how we, the order we take them in, for example, or the grouping of articles for purposes of discussion or other action, uh, are things that the town meeting members can approve. So what I, what I was suggesting and how I envision it would work is I would entertain a motion, to group certain articles for purposes of discussion, and then town meeting floor would have to approve that motion. Once those articles were grouped, I would, uh, you know, entertain a motion that we, uh, indefinitely postpone the group. And, uh, you know, have whatever discussion people felt the need, uh, to have before we took a vote on that. At which point they would all be indefinitely postponed if the vote was successful. Obviously this would take some, um, some, some inning, some thinking about what those other than critical articles are and some education of the, of the public, uh, to expect this kind of thing. Um, I would not advocate or suggest that we should come to, uh, our next town meeting, whatever it is, with a plan to, um, you know, summarily postpone.
Paul, Paul, can I hang, can I hang on one second? We, um, Lisa dropped off at some, so could we give her?
Sure.
Quick minute to call back in again.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Hey Dan, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
I was just, um, you know, um, you mentioned about the birds and the trees and so forth. So, uh, you beat me to my question to you, which was, are you really outside? Or is it some sort of those new fangled Zoom backgrounds? Oh, now you're inside.
So I'm back, I'm back inside. It got a little cold in the, and you never know what's going to come down from one of those trees, those turkey.
Well, I've been hearing a lot about Zoom backgrounds.
Yes, you can change your background in a variety of ways.
I, I haven't figured that out yet, but, uh.
It's easy.
We'll, we'll. I need to do that.
Zoom session on it one day.
Right.
You could even paste your picture in too, or somebody else's picture.
Well, yeah, in my case, it would have to be someone with, you know, a handsome head of hair.
That looks like Aldo Cipriano then.
Yeah, right. So.
Well, do we need to do, are we looking to make a decision? I'm not sure. Maybe Lisa's having technical issues or?
Well, and I think Lisa's question really goes, you know, beyond what we're contemplating now. Well, well, let me ask this, Paul. Would you be looking at revising the location for town meeting or just setting a new date at this point?
At this point, I would just be setting a new date. Uh, but I don't think the locate, is, is the locate, Aldo, maybe you can help me here, is, 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 is it, uh, incumbent on us to, to, um, specify a location when we announce the new date?
I think it would be appropriate.
Okay. Well, then I've got to do a little more thinking about that, Brian, because I, I, up till now, that question hadn't occurred to me. I mean, so my assumption, if we get the all clear, is that we get the all clear, right? So that Trotter would be available. You know, the, the issue I've, I've always had with an outdoor town meeting or the idea of an outdoor town meeting is weather. And, you know, that's a big if sometimes. And so, you know, if we could find a way to be inside, but nevertheless spread out, that would be my goal.
Yep. And, you know, and I understand that. I can, I could anticipate hesitancy from a number of people that would, that typically do attend a town meeting to, to attend anything indoors still.
Yeah, and the question will be.
And I would hate to move forward with the town meeting that, and, and again, part of the reason why I only want to limit it to those items that would be critical to us getting into FY21. I, I really don't want to set up a scenario where people don't feel. where people don't feel comfortable in attending from a public health perspective.
I feel as, as strongly, if not more strongly about that than you do. I, I, I don't want to have a town meeting, frankly, if there's anybody out there who feels like they were compelled not to come.
So Paul, you just, you just hit on exactly what I was going to say. You are never going to please every resident voter. Everyone, somebody's going to have a different concern than the next person. Someone's going to, well, do it outside. Someone will say, I'm not standing outside in the elements. I'm only doing it inside or I will only do it if by mail. There's, oh, you cannot. So what I'm hoping for at some point is that we get some guidance from the state as to how towns are supposed to conduct town meetings in this world that we're in now.
Yes.
I don't, just, Paul, just, it, just, um, my view on this is, is it sounds like your, um, recommendation proposal, however, however you want to characterize it, is to, um, uh, based on the, on the new legislation to continue, uh, that it's your intent to continue the, the, the town meeting date again, um, likely to a date the week of May 11 to 16. And personally, I don't object to that. Um, and the, the only observation I would make is that the legislation allows the date to be set. For instance, even if May 4th, the governor lifts the state of emergency, um, we have 30 days from then to actually have the town meeting. Um, so the, the earliest that I think the state of emergency is ever going to get lifted is May 4th. I'll be surprised if it's lifted on May 4th, but we would have 30 days after that to continue the town meeting again. And I would just continue it as far out as we can, because the more time that's available for people, the more comfort level there's going to be wherever we end up having this thing and whenever we end up having it.
Agreed.
So, so, uh, sorry, Sam, just real quick to Marty's point. M- M- Marty, in your scenario, you know, with, within 30 days of May 4 is June 4, but we don't have the power to go out to June 4 right now. So.
I understand.
Okay.
I mean, we, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I, I have no objection to, to continuing it to a date between, um, May 11 to 16. I'd pick the outside date. I'd go with the 16th because I don't think we're going to have a town meeting by May 16th. And I would just extend it out as far as we can to have the flexibility to, 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 because I think there's going to be another 30 day extension, um, after the May 16th date.
Understood.
So Jim, you were, uh, you had joined as well. Just curious if you had any thoughts, any input on this? And, and not that I'm, you know, entertaining any discussions on setting dates on this, but another thing that comes into play that you need to deal with is the town election as well and the workload that falls upon you with a town meeting and a town election. Jim, can you hear me?
Yes. You know, I'm sort of in Marty Healy's camp on this. I think that, uh, realistically, we're not going to end up having a town meeting or an election until sometime in June. And, um, I haven't heard any definitive information from any state source to give us changes in how elections and/or town meeting would operate. So I'm just asking questions and listening and trying to figure out what options would become available down the road, um, when this, we eventually hold these. Um, if by chance, uh, worst case scenario, you had the town meeting on one day and the election the next day, we could, we could make that work. Um, but, uh, boy, it's going to be interesting to see how we can safely hold a town meeting and an election to do this safely for both the residents and the election and town meeting workers. This is going to be, uh, it's going to be interesting to see how this all plays out in a, in a month or six weeks or whatever. I just, I don't know right now.
Yeah.
We'll be good.
Yeah. All right. So Ms. Brashow, I see you have rejoined. I'm not, hopefully I didn't hit a wrong button and, uh, kick you out. So.
No, my internet went down, but thank you. I had to wait for it to go back up. So.
All right. Um, so I know you were in the middle of question and answer from Paul. I don't know if you still have something that you want to continue with. And my apologies to everybody else if it is repetitive. We did hold off a bit, but, uh,
No, it's fine. Just continue. It's fine.
Okay, sorry. Um, all right. So I don't think, again, Paul, you're the one with the, uh, with the authority on this. So there isn't a board vote that really comes into play at this point.
No, the, the, this consultation is, is contemplated by the legislation. So needed to do this. And as I indicated earlier, I'll, I'll be reaching out to, um, public safety and public health. And then, um, you know, I can communicate through, uh, Mr. Purple back to you guys, um, as well as town council and the town clerk.
Okay.
Uh, later.
So you'll select a date and then, so I think our board, as of right now, is planning to meet again April 21st. And I would presume May 5th is our first meeting in May. And maybe we can just pencil in another meeting with you on Tuesday, May 5th, just to, um, check in on and see how that may, that date in May that you select is looking a month from now.
I think that's a good idea.
Everybody seemed to, uh, be in agreement with that?
Agreed.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion at the board level on this item?
Nope.
Nope.
All right. Mr. Cipriano, Mr. Hegarty, Mr. Smino, thank you all for joining.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Good night.
All right. Signing off.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Signing off. Thank you.
Oh, no, I thought somebody else had. No, all right. Okay, thanks. Um, with that, I think we have covered everything uh, on the agenda. Uh, curious if any of the attendees that are with us have public comment. We'll go to public comment at this point. Um, again, if you do, you should see a raise hands icon on the screen. If you could raise that, if I do recognize you, state your name and address and go from there. So is there public comment? Once? Or twice? Seeing no public comment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, there were a couple of things in terms of COVID updates that, uh, just a couple of things I wanted to go over.
Motion has been made, Mr. Purple.
I understand. If it's seconded for discussion, we can go there then, but.
Motion was made, seconded, and the chair will go to Mr. Purple for an update.
I'm actually kind of disappointed that Mrs. Hale wasn't waving her blue hand over there, um, you know, with your motion to adjourn. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring to the board's attention. Um, again, you know, this, this COVID response is really kind of a moving target. Um, and, you know, um, we, we don't know what we don't know. And, you know, we continue to try to, try to, you know, get it right. And by the time we get it completely right, hopefully we'll be out of this. Um, but a couple of things. One, um, there was, um, federal legislation, um, that was, um, that was passed by President Trump on March 18th, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. As part of that act, um, it did expand, um, the Family Medical Leave Act and, um, and, and, uh, it does make that available, um, to employees to help with childcare issues, um, you know, for, for people who, um, may find that they have to work and now the kids aren't in school. And, um, there are, there is the ability for cities and towns to exempt, um, public safety employees from that, um, from, um, having that expanded benefit in order to ensure that, you know, that we have appropriate staffing. Um, there are cities and towns that are exempting their public safety, uh, people from, from having this benefit. Um, but what I, um, would suggest to the board, um, that I would pursue, and again, you've got to make notifications to the unions. They do have the ability to bargain. But the approach that I would like to take that I've seen in at least one other town is not to exempt, um, any of the public safety employees from accessing this benefit, but, um, uh, but reserving the right to revisit the issue should we find that there is a negative impact on staffing levels, um, uh, at some point down the road. Um, I think that this, you know, sends a better message to our public safety employees. And, um, I just wanted to get, um, the board's sense on that to see if there was a concurrence in that approach.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, with me.
Me as well.
Makes sense. Mark, my only question would be, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming from what you said that there isn't a, a sunset date in the legislation by which you have to act if you want to exempt?
No, there is not.
Okay.
There is not. Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, the, the other thing that I would like the board, um, uh, to do at this point, um, which seems to make sense, is, um, to basically, um, put in place a hiring freeze, um, you know, at this point for any, um, existing vacancies, um, and unless the board approves hiring that position, that would at least give, um, some control over, um, you know, filling any vacancies that, that may be existing at this point, um, so we can determine whether that needs to happen now or whether, you know, those could be delayed. Uh, want to see if the board would consider that as well.
Can you do that administratively yourself without the boards?
So I, I think it carries a little more weight, obviously from, from an elected board, Sam, you know, by, by, um, supporting that position. Um, I, I, I don't want to get into a, um, a, a certain contest, you know, with, with a, you know, with, with somebody over whether we should do this or shouldn't do this. And I'm not thinking of anybody in particular, but, um, I, I just think that the board should be able to, um, you know, have some decision as to whether or not, you know, we'll be, you know, hiring into a vacant position at this time, um, given that, you know, some of the things that you heard tonight from, um, from the representative and the senator, you know, at this point, they're trying to hold us harmless for 20. Um, but, you know, we are trying to, um, you know, keep expenses down in the event that, you know, that that becomes an issue.
I guess my view, Mark, is that if there were, if there's an open position and a department head believes that it's absolutely essential to fill, they can make that pitch to it, to us, and we can make the determination that notwithstanding a, a freeze that we voted on, that that position is appropriate to be filled. I think it's going to be a tough argument for somebody to make, um, you know, given current circumstances, but obviously we could do that.
Yeah, I just would like to put it back to, you know, let the, let, you know, let somebody make the argument to the board and then the board has the decision. I, I think that, um, it would be better to have it with the board, um, um, than, uh, simply with me. So you've got five people instead of one.
I like the idea of Mark.
Does your recommendation, uh, include the current advertised position for town accountant?
Yes. So I need to, I, I think at this point we'll need to see, I, I, you know, I, I wanted to put it out, see what we get for, you know, for, um, for applicants in this climate. Um, uh, I know that there are some other towns that have had, uh, positions out and open, and it's very difficult in this climate. I, I'll be honest with you. Um, you know, the town accountant intends to retire on June 30. I've already had, um, conversations with her, uh, about, um, continuing in the role after a two week cooling off period, if, if in fact we go there, um, just to make sure that we have some continuity in the position. That's something else we don't know as to, as to what, you know, what this current situation is going to do to our hiring prospects.
Okay.
I, I will, I will move that we do that. That we, that we, we freeze all hiring, um, with the, with the proviso that, that, um, um, obviously we can deem a, a particular position essential if a sufficient argument is made.
Second. Move seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Shay, aye.
Stuyler's aye.
Glenn aye.
Brashow aye.
So I'm looking at the list Vanessa made for me. Um, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, cherry pick, um, cherry pick a little. There's, there's one other item. Um, the board was very, um, was very good about, uh, passing the policy in terms of, um, remote, um, working remotely, you know, during this crisis to try to allow, um, some of that happening. And quite honestly, I think it's, it's been very effective in most areas. Um, we have now found that people who are working remotely and, um, you know, like I said, that piece is working well. People who may have been quarantined for any particular reason, um, uh, you know, have been returning to work after going through certain processes, um, that, um, Ms. Hale has been working, uh, with Leslie Chamberlain to make sure that we're putting everything in place the way we should. Um, that is not codified in our current policy. And I think it's something that should be. And again, if you remember when we did that policy the first time, we wanted to codify some of the practices that we already had in place. And I think that's something that, um, that we should codify at some point. Um, I did not have the ability, um, to, uh, to get something ready for you tonight to review. And, um, as I told Mr. Shay earlier today, I didn't want Mr. Healy scolding me, um, for putting something on the table, you know, two hours before the meeting and asking the board to take a position. So, um, I think it would be, um, uh, I'm putting this in the board's bailiwick that, that I think that we need to codify in that policy, amend it, to codify the processes for people to be able to return to work from a quarantine, whether it was from positive, um, a, a positive COVID, um, uh, test or, um, in, in the majority of the cases, uh, simply from a quarantine, um, just out of, um, the abundance of caution, um, to ensure the integrity of the rest of the workforce.
Okay. So would you like to Bob, work with Vanessa to come up with that language? Would, would you like a board member to, uh, bounce that off of and work with and have something ready for us at our next meeting or at another time?
I think it, I think it'd be helpful if there's a board member or, or, um, I'll say a board member. I was going to say two, but that's fine. Just to try and, um, again, we're not reinventing the wheel. You know, there are other communities that have already, um, you know, incorporated that language and some of the other language that we talked about earlier, um, for the, um, uh, referencing the, the federal act that came down from President Trump, um, you know, with the Family and Medical Leave Act pieces. So I think there's, there's some, um, you know, the path has been worn. It's just a matter of us taking the, taking all of that and, and amending it correctly into, into what we already have.
I'd volunteer to work on that. If, but nobody else is interested.
Works for me.
So moved.
I just want to make sure that it's run by, uh, council before it comes to the full board as well, Mark.
Oh, absolute. Like I said, so I think the, the, um, uh, the goal is to try and bring a workable draft back to the board for your approval at the next meeting. Um, you're not meeting again until April 21st. Um, if we find the need that we need to have this really codified in place sooner, um, then, then we can do that. But again, um, I, I just want to codify the existing practices, you know, that we're using to make sure that, that the employees who come back are now, um, you know, well, and, and, you know, we're, we're not going to have, they're not going to spread anything to any of the other employees, you know?
Okay. And again, Mark had just mentioned it, but, um, hopefully the board is okay with, you know, going till the 21st to meet again. Um, I thought it was important to meet on a more regular basis as this whole thing was unfolding, but I think we're at a point now where I don't think we need to contin- continue to meet on a weekly basis. Certainly if something arises, something changes drastically, there's nothing stopping us from meeting again. But my, my plan would be to, uh, reconvene, uh, with our next meeting on two weeks from tonight on the 21st.
Makes sense.
Uh, one other item.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark. One other item, and then I'll stop. Um, something to, uh, for the board to consider, uh, not necessarily at the next meeting, but, but maybe the following meeting and first meeting in May. Uh, I think that we need to have a conversation with our veterans agent to begin talking, uh, a little bit about Memorial Day services and, um, at least planning, um, from our veterans agent, uh, point of view, um, how we, how we would intend to do those services if, if in fact we're still talking about, um, social distancing and large gatherings.
Yeah, that sounds like a plan, Mark. If you want me to engage with you and him on that, but I'm happy to. I'm, I'm sure that you guys can handle those discussions. I'm sure that you guys can handle those discussions, but I'm happy to be involved in them as well.
Sure. So what I'll do, I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to Brian and see if he can, you know, begin to put something together and then see about having him on a, on an upcoming agenda in the next meeting or two to, to begin that discussion. So at least we have something workable on the table, you know, should we continue to have to operate in this environment.
I'm confident the veterans are going to be doing something. We may even march six feet apart, but I'm confident.
Excellent. All right. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Very good. So I will then go back to the motion that was made and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning? Shay, aye.
Kalendai.
Brash, you aye.
Marty, you're a yes as well?
Healy, aye.
All right. Passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, all. Stay safe.